Mr. McCoslin, please take role.
Mrs. Weiss.
Here.
Mrs. Janisak.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modra.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved. So moved.
Motion is made by Ms. Scalzo, second by Ms. Janisak.
Mr. McGregor?
I'm a yes.
Motion carries, eight zero.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the 11:14 combined committee regular meeting? Motion is made by Ms. Hoppy, second by Ms. Turner.
Motion carries, eight zero.
Thank you. I'd like to announce an executive session held December 12th for personnel, other legal matters, and receiving information. Wait a minute, we didn't have that one. We had a committee meeting, yeah. So we will have it. I'm just reading the page, yeah. Are there a student government report?
Hi, I'm Caleb. I'm here with student government from the high school. So in SGA, we are hosting a toy drive, toy drive called Hoops for Hopes at the girls' and boys' basketball home openers this Thursday and Friday. Guests are able to bring one toy for their admission as a ticket. SGA is also hosting two separate Secret Santas. The first one is between students and staff. We're hosting a breakfast on Tuesday, December 19th to exchange gifts. There's also students, there's also just a regular student's Secret Santa. And we are planning spirit days for the next, for the week before Wednesday break. Some of the days include holiday socks, holiday movie character day, and pajama day. And SGA adopted two families, and the schools adopt a family program. We will be going to Old Navy to buy clothes, shoes, and gift cards that we will donate to the families in need for this holiday season. And as the year is coming to a close, we started to look at plans for 2024. Our first project, and our biggest project of the year, is Wish Week. It will take, it will take place in February. Students are able to make wishes for other students and staff, and SGA will grant the wishes. And last year, we granted nearly 1,400 wishes across the school.
Thank you. You've got a lot of things going on. Is there a PTO, PTA report? Anybody on for PTA? PTO? No? Okay. Okay, that's fine. Solicitor report.
Happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any committee reports?
I'll share, because a lot of people in the school community have mentioned it, that the municipality is going to update all of the sidewalks in front of their building, so the library and the parking lot, to make them all ADA compliant. So if you use a wheelchair or stroller or anything like that, you will now be able to, well, once they do the work, you will be able to get on and off those sidewalks appropriately to cross streets, access the trolley stop, or whatever you're doing. So that was really good news from the municipality last night.
Thank you. Next item. So we have a presentation from Messero and Draw Collective on the new elementary school project.
Okay.
Make sure that green light's on the microphone. Thank you.
Oh, there it is. Okay, so it's been a long time coming, but last week, we received bids for the elementary school project. It was December 6th at 2:00 PM. We received the bids and then had an opening and read the bids publicly. We did receive good participation from a lot of bidders. There were six contracts that we bid, and just as a summary here, you can see that we had at least three bidders for each one of the contracts, and some of them, as many as six bidders, which is really good in this climate. I think it was a really good turnout for the bidders.
Is there anything you want to add to that?
The, up on the screen, I'm not going to read you all these numbers, but just the low bids. As you remember, we talked about having a base bid and then alternate bids, but just a summary of the base bids, the low bidders are listed here. General Construction, Ricon, HVAC Construction, Heranic Plumbing, Enders Plumbing, Fire Protection, Interstate Fire Protection, Electrical, Merritt Electrical Group, and then Food Service Construction. So those are the six contracts that will make up the construction package for the project. The total of the base bids was 108, 832, 240. Just to, we talked about this early on in the process. We did include alternate bids in the project. I'm not going to go through the details of these too much, but we had identified alternates to only shell out the top floor of the building. We had alternates to add snowmelt at the entrances to the building. We also had an alternate to reduce the costs, or to, the base bid does not include the play equipment and the play surfacing in these two areas. And we had an alternate to add those things in. If you remember, we identified that as one of the potential alternates, thinking that you could defer the purchase and construction of that to possibly sometime during the construction project. We also had an alternate to build the sidewalk along King School Road, and as a cost savings option, we had an alternate to eliminate the seating in the LGI room. There were some additional miscellaneous alternates that we did, a couple general construction ones. The first one was a swap-out for a less expensive carpet type of flooring. The base big carpet is a higher-performance textile that performs more like a hard surface while still having the acoustic properties of a carpet. We also had one to increase the warranty on the roof and the millage of the roof. We had a couple HVAC alternates. The H3 series were for two alternate manufacturers of building control systems. The base bid is actually the district standard, so those were not alternates. We did them more just to keep your base bid supplier honest in his bid, so I think that proved out pretty well. The next one, H4, one of the preferred rooftop unit manufacturers offers a walk-in service vestibule, and you can see that that is with zero charge for that. The next one, E3, is for a redundant fiber optic service to the building. One will come in from the middle school side of the site, and the other one would come in from King School Road. And then E4 was a, for cable tray throughout the building in lieu of the J-hooks. Through the discussion with the administration, we put together the recommended contract award summary, which is up here on the screen, and this is what we're recommending that you vote on tonight for approval. It includes the addition of the sidewalk at King School Road in the general construction contract. It includes the rooftop units with the service vestibule in the HVAC contract. That's a zero cost change. There are no alternates in the plumbing or fire protection contract. In the electrical contract, we're recommending the inclusion of the redundant duct bank for the redundant fiber to the school, and then no alternates in the food service. So that's really the presentation for tonight. It's just to give you an update on the awards. I think, you know, positive outcome that we got, good bidding, you know, low higher numbers than what we were hoping for, but, you know, I don't think that the, that the big cuts to the project were warranted based on the numbers that we received. Any questions about the bidding?
No, I mean, thank you. I think it's a relief in many ways that, yeah, it's a little bit over, but we've been seeing some of these projects coming in at 20%, 30% over what the plans were. So that's a relief, actually, and, you know, when you look at it in terms of total cost, it kind of fits within the guidelines we established to make this a better option than renovating six buildings, because if you take this total cost, you would have an average cost of renovation for other buildings, about $20 million, and we've learned from IMS that there's no way we could renovate a building for $20 million. So from a cost standpoint, it's never a great time to spend this much money, but there's no better time than now because of other reasons also. You know, we're going to see a pretty large turnover in staff. We're going to see cushion in our, in our salary costs, but also, this will let us better utilize and optimize the amount of staff that we have in our building. So, you know, the, the capital cost is a cost today, but it's inflation-protected, basically, but all of our staffing costs will, you know, they're, they're at, you know, at the mercy of inflation.
So can I ask a question regarding some of the fiber optics and that kind of thing? There was an E-Rate reimbursement. Do you want to just go to where that could take us?
Yeah, so if you're unfamiliar with the E-Rate program, E-Rate is federal funding that's available through the E-Rate program, and it's meant to subsidize transport costs of internet connection and fiber, as well as something that's called Category 2, which is like structured cabling or networking equipment. So there's all kinds of rules that go along with that, but we have Category 2 funding available that could be used to mitigate some of the FFNE costs, I think is what those are calling. So like the networking costs, the networking equipment, that money will be available when we're ready to purchase that equipment, so, which will, I don't know what that exact number is right now, but it's a significant, yeah, piece.
So does our fiber optics redundancy fall under that also?
It could, if.
It could, if it was bid through the E-Rate process, but the better option to use E-Rate funding for is for the equipment that you're going to put in. It's a little bit cleaner of a bid process, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So that was coordinated with Brett during the design process. When we get to the data rooms, we basically have like the punch downs and then all of the network switches, and those things would be purchased presumably through the E-Rate program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So the next steps, we have received approvals on all of the code submission stuff that we went through. I think it's all but just a formality to get the building permit pulled together, and the construction team, well, Messero will be mobilizing. They're already starting to talk to the contractors, get some of the pre-work done, and then we anticipate that they'll be starting construction early in January. So very exciting, and it's nice to kind of pass the baton a little bit to these guys, put them in the hot seat for a while. But it'll be, you know, this will be a very long construction process, as you all know, and, you know, just to kind of forewarn you a little bit, you, you're no stranger to projects, but there will be things that happen along the way, bumps in the road, and we'll get through it together, but at the end of the day, we're going to all have something, I think, that's, that we're going to be proud of, and that's going to really serve the district for a very long time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I guess, you know, maybe one thing is interesting, because I heard this from you also, but you're all familiar with the lowest bidder, Ricon. I think you're doing other projects with them today. You know, just to speak to the risk standpoint a little bit, because we put about a 3.5% allowance in there, so it's, you know, it's already in that number. There's about a 3.5% allowance, right? And so, based on your, the work that the three parties have done, Ricon, Messero, and Draw, I mean, what's your level of confidence around kind of sticking within that?
It's pretty high. The thing that's nice about new construction is that once you get on what I like to call man-made structure, which in this case would be the grade beams on top of the caissons, we're really out of the mysterious, you know, we don't know kind of stuff. I mean, in any building that you renovate, you can open a wall and, you know, fine, God only knows what. But once we get on man-made structure, we should be free, not free and clear, but we should be good. We know from our own constructability, and we know that for the most part, that the numbers came in right on top of one another, with a few outliers, that generally is a good sign that everybody's looking at the same script.
Sure.
The number of pre-bid RFIs and addenda, although high, this is a massive job, you know, so it's all kind of proportionate. We're pretty, you know, confident that we have good drawings, we have good specifications, we have good contractors to work with, so we should be, I'm looking forward to doing a good project, for sure.
I think the highest level of risk with the construction is going to be in the soil, which is consistent with what he's talking about here. It's less about the, just the earth probably in general, and more to do with the foundations that are supporting the building. I know that we've talked about this in different meetings, but a portion of the new school is what we call spread footings. It's just foundations that sit on the soil, and then a good portion of the building is deep foundations, which are the caissons. And in the spread footing foundation side of the building, a portion of that is, you know, going to be what you'd be used to seeing, where you dig a hole and you basically put your foundation on top of the excavation, and you keep on going. Some of it, because of the fact that we're building on a hill, what we'll be doing is we'll be over-excavating underneath those foundations till we get to some competent soil material, and then they'll be building that back up either with soil or with lean concrete fill, and then putting the foundations on top of that. We do have in the project, so those two conditions for spread footings, and then on the caisson side, the caissons get drilled to a certain depth when they get enough bearing capacity. And in most cases, or a lot of the cases on our job, some of those, I think, get bearing capacity on soil, and some of them are actually going to be socketed into the rock. And they're getting bearing capacity by the friction, as well as the end pressure on the caissons. So there's four basic conditions that we have with foundations. Our team, which includes our structural engineers, did a really good job, I think, of plotting all the borings onto the footprint of the building, and looking at the presumed bearing plate, or bearing elevations for all four of those conditions. And so in the documents for every caisson, the engineer has told the contractor to anticipate some amount of rock socket, some depth of caisson, and then in the case of the shallow foundations, some amount of over-excavation with replacement of soil, or over-excavation with replacement of concrete. Those probably aren't going to be the final quantities that end up in there, but the contractors have bid to that. So we feel that we've tried to take most of the risk out of that activity by giving everybody like the same bid criteria, but then also so that you own some of that. And in the contract, there'll be unit prices that will either add to or deduct from those quantities. So if we called for 100 lineal foot of rock socket, and you have 120, you're going to pay for the 20. If it's 80 and we owned 120, then you're going to get money back. So, you know, just, all of that is a fairly long explanation, but to make you understand that it's not just a one-size-fits-all foundation system. We always have risk in the soil. I think we've tried to anticipate as much of that as we can and mitigate it, but there still will be some possibility for that as we come out of the ground.
Plus, it's a nice huge site. Lots of room for everybody, which is great.
Good, good. Okay, thank you.
Maybe in the budget and finance section, Mr. McCoslin can go over the financing plan when we get to that section.
Okay.
I was just going to point out one thing. Early in January, at your next board meeting, one of the upcoming things we're going to be asking you is to award a professional service with your construction testing organization. So all of that soil work that happens on the site, the geotechnical engineer will need to be onsite doing the testing of the soils and determining those, like when they've reached varying capacities. So we'll be forwarding to you a proposal for the geotechnical engineers to do the soil portion of the work, and then there'll be a similar type of a proposal to do testing on the, we call them special inspections, but they would be structural steel, concrete, all of those things. Now, those things are a little bit further out because we won't be out of the ground for a while, but the soil testing will be something, we'll need to have authorization for them to get involved early in January.
And then however we can get the students involved, we're looking forward to those discussions as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is there a superintendent's report?
Yes, there is, actually. We don't have any retirees on tonight's agenda, so we're going to go right to our high school presentation. The board knows that we're trying to feature one school a month throughout this school year to allow the principal and the staff to shine, to share their points of pride, and remind the community what makes Bethel Park best in class. So I'm going to turn the microphone over there to Mr. Valani and his group.
His esteemed staff.
I'll be, we'll let you take it from here.
Test, test. No, let's stand up. So you're not going to believe me, but I did not tell them to wear these shirts. They did this on their own, and I couldn't be more proud of it. So, thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. Very excited. Joe Valani, the high school principal, have our other assistant principals here and some students I'm going to introduce momentarily. Being at the high school, the great work with our communications department, Mr. Cromie, all the clubs and social media that we have the benefit of having, there's a lot of notoriety out there for the high school, and as we highlight all the schools in the district, you know, there's a lot of stuff out there already on social media. A lot of these students partake in activities, sports, shows. But with that being said, we wanted to really highlight some of the things we're really proud of and stand by at the high school. Earlier tonight, before everyone arrived, you know, we were looking at outcomes reports. We were looking at that, and we were looking at data, curriculum. One of the topics in here is academics. But when you look at the student, and why I'm so happy to have these students here with us tonight, there's so much that goes into it. The activities, the part, the homework, the late nights, coming to board meetings to present and put our best foot forward, as they do every day, and represent Bethel Park High School. So I think it's really important to highlight them. So with us, we have four of our student leadership teams. I have a homeroom of student leadership teams. There are seven of us in there. Four of them were able to make it. Some of them had other activities tonight. But we have Faith Clunin, Clara McGuff, Emma Timmons, and Emma Smith. We have Mr. Fodzie and Mr. Walters, the other part of our administration team here at the high school, and we're going to highlight some things in here. So there they are. There's the rest of the student leadership group that couldn't be in attendance tonight, but wanted everyone to see them. Every day we meet, we review topics, and it really gives the students a voice. All of them are in different activities, groups. Caleb Bush has been an ambassador and representing the student government to the board all year. He does a wonderful job highlighting the different activities going on from SGA and the high school, and then, like I said, between interact, musicals, plays, sports, activities, these guys do it all. We have a couple of themes in tonight's presentation. Like a standard academic period, I think 41 minutes will be enough time for us. No, I'm just kidding. But they have to sit through 41 minutes, so you've got to think about what that is with instruction and introduction, hit the point and conclusion. But we're going to highlight some things. We have some pictures, but looking at four core areas: academics, activities, supports, and school culture. Really embodies what we're doing there. So when you look at it, we talked about curriculum. It's constantly moving forward and being evaluated, our curriculum coordinators, our facilitators, our teachers, really embody trying to push and give unique experiences here at Bethel Park to our students. We, just to highlight, we have 20 AP courses. We have 15 CHSs. We just had new partnerships, and MoU signed with Carlo. We're in the evaluating and finalizing hopefully some future classes with Robert Morris University. And what does that do? It gives our students more opportunities to leave high school with college credits, and that's the ultimate goal. If we can prepare our students to, you know, hit some of those general ed requirements and get some of those prerequisite courses done in college, college is so expensive. So with the curriculum and the rigor of the courses they have here, if we give them that opportunity to go to college, to have so many credits under their belt, to knock out some of those gen ed requirements, they can then apply that towards their future degrees, trainings, or anything else they do, postgraduate work after their undergrad if they so chose to do so. Want to give a shout out to Atlas. You know, when you evaluate curriculum, our teachers, our students, with Dr. Walsh, part of the curriculum goals and the strategic plan has really been getting things down and to further evaluate and do that. So we've had teachers doing a lot of great work on development days. You know, our teacher practitioners have continuously pushed to advance their courses, to get new materials, AP Classroom. We've done a lot of work with NIMZI, the National Math Science Institute. So trying to just continue pushing the envelope and getting that curriculum updated, written down, and Atlas has been a tremendous step in doing that evaluating and continuing to push our academic studies forward at the high school. Looking at our offerings, scheduling, even though we're not halfway through the year, we're already thinking about scheduling for next year. We're at that time where the course selection guide, it looks like a six, but that is that font that came through Canva. It is a G. Course Selection Guide will be coming up in January, where you'll see a lot of the offerings, the selections. Students go and read it from front to back, and they have it memorized. We recite it in the mornings. Just kidding. But no, it's, we're going to have that selection available with all the different offerings. Just to highlight some of the updates, more CHS offerings. You know, some schools in the area don't want to do it because they worry about inflated QPAs. Personal philosophy is if our kids can take advantage of the opportunities, you know, the only thing an inflated QPA is going to give them is more scholarship opportunities. It's going to make them competitive for a lot of the schools. Why not? With House Bill 1642, Dr. Walsh mentioned it earlier, it gives them five quality points, whether they take a CHS or an AP class. And again, it's more power to our students. It's giving them more opportunity and a better foot ahead when they leave Bethel Park High School. Peer classes, one of my favorite things. We have really shifted away and gotten away from what we used to call adapted classes. When we look at least restrictive environment and fully inclusion, we want our students fully participating. We had a wonderful event today where the best buddies, leadership, organized a little Christmas party with surrounding local schools. We had eight visiting school districts. We had a visitor from up north who came in as well. That was just our administration. They came down. But we did have Santa Claus pop in for a visit as well, and it really was a tremendous experience, seeing the joy those students face. seeing the joy those students faces. And it just compounds with the sincerity and love of our students. And when you look at our exceptional students, our general students, and when they're combined in our peer classes, it started with pure PE. We have pure tech. We have a pure art class, and we have these now independent studies with these peer helpers because the buddies, we have about 140 best buddies. It's really hard, like, three to one with buddies, but at the same time, it's tremendous. And those students are getting a wonderful experience, but the people, you know, doing it is a wonderful thing. It ties in with our unified sports and a lot of the things we're doing. So, it's just tremendous work, and the relationships are genuine friendships, and they go beyond the brick and mortar of the normal day and do that. More CHS, we've talked about that. PE updates. They won't benefit from it, but we're reevaluating and reinventing, rewriting our PE curriculum. So, we had a standard ninth and 10th grade PE that included a swimming component in that. We've made a shift in last year's curriculum councils, and our teachers are underway in rewriting a curriculum that really embodies a lot. So, ninth grade still has a swimming component that has been traditional to Bethel Park. After that, instead of going to a 10th grade swim with component, we're going to have more elective-based offerings. And the whole idea of this is encouraging students to be active. When you look at mental health and social emotional learning, physical activity, it drops, you know? And there's a lot of studies there, and our PE teachers are really focused on the benefits of that. But not every student wants to be in a competitive PE class or wants to be that full-on exercising. So, we're looking at some really fun offerings. So, after that, we still have the same requirements for PE, but after that ninth grade PE, they have a number of half-year elective choices. There's going to be a lifetime activities, obviously our peer classes, but lifetime activities that are going to be low-impact, encouraged for long-lasting physical activity. We have a team sports. We have a fitness class. We're adding a movement class that will allow students to do improv, I'm sorry, Pilates, yoga, and different things. What else? We had an adventure class. We're going to look to apply for a grant for a possible rock wall. I didn't put that in my budget, Mr. McCloslin. But we'll, we're going to try to get some offset grant funding for that and some things there. And then just half-year electives versus full-year electives. At Bethel Park, we're very unique. We have a lot of singleton offerings that students take advantage of based on their personal interest, and we're constantly trying to keep that and maintain those in a way that they can schedule. They're all bright students. They take multiple labs, music, ensembles, sciences, and then, so it's hard to get sometimes full-year electives. And where some of them are dying and becoming obsolete, we are able to maintain and continue to run those sections and offer them to our students to get that wide variety and exposure to a lot of things. I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Fodzie, who took over the lead initiative. Ooh, he's ready with a microphone.
Testing, testing. Thank you, Mr. Valani. Yes, so just to touch base, I know that everyone has pretty much been aware of our lead initiative, our Learning and Richmond Activity Days. Mr. Cromie's highlighted it very often on Facebook, and also I know that BPTV has been taking some videos. Overall, what I could tell you is we started this initiative in April of 2021, and it has grown drastically. The feedback we have received from students and teachers in the community has been great. One of the biggest testaments is the fact that I'm getting students coming to me regularly asking to present something to their peers, which is pretty awesome. About every month, on the second Wednesday at the end of fourth period, students have 40 minutes where they can sign up to complete an activity, something of interest or something new. We've done intro to beekeeping. We've done Pilates, hip-hop dance. We just had a sing-along to Taylor Swift. Yes, so it's a wide variety. Sometimes there's some athletic activities. Basically, the idea is a lot of these kids, they have schedules that are very full. They don't have much time to try something new, whether it's something related to a class or an activity or a club, and this gives them that opportunity. Something else we did is we got some student feedback this year, as well as our senior surveys, and regularly, one thing I see is that students are saying, "I enjoy getting to be with my peers, and I also enjoy the opportunity to meet other kids." So, we're looking to expand on lead, bring in some more community presentations. We had No Limits Martial Arts recently, and hopefully get some students to present more often as well.
I have one question. Serious question.
Yeah.
Are you a Swiftie?
I'll answer one.
You should see his office.
I was going to just say add to. The AP Jam sessions, those have actually been very popular as well as we get ready for the AP exams. That's a lot to cram into the classes, so students could sign up to have the, their classes broken into smaller chunks and get some more focused instruction to prepare for the test.
Thanks, Mr. Fodzie. Work-based learning, I put that little symbol up top. We're taking a nice step and approach. Dr. Minch, Dr. Shu have been very supportive with special education, K to 12. We have a lot of wonderful programs going. We have students having experiences within the school that want to be special education teachers. We also have our exceptional students that were sometimes going out of district to different programs, and we've really tried to bring opportunities back into the school with training, work-based learning opportunities. So, work-based learning is a broad term that talks about different unique opportunities for transitional goals of students with IEPs. We have a joint venture with our DECA, our marketing department and co-curricular DECA Club, run our coffee shop, The Bean and Berry. You're going to see it just got a new location. It's about to get a facelift and get some more updates to it. We do a coffee center. We have students helping out throughout the building, doing different things with office clerical work. You know, we adopted a PACE curriculum years ago, and we still utilize it in the early phases of our special education for exceptional students. But then how do those skills become practical and applicable to real-world scenarios and situations? And that's where the work-based learning program comes in with the school, the community partnerships. We've worked with different companies outside, and we're continuing to expand those partnerships to get those students real-life work and trying to get transitional goals and getting them to be fully and gainfully employed when they leave Bethel Park High School. So, the future for that is very excited. We've had a number of grants that Mr. Hernandez has worked with, who does some of our transition work, and she's also department facilitator that's worked with our directors as well in obtaining that, and it's very bright future going ahead, and we're really excited about the expansion of those programs. All right, activities. I'm going to pass it over. Who's taking it first? All right, Clara.
Hi, my name is Clara McGuff. I am a student at the award-winning Blue Ribbon Bethel Park High School. And Mr. Valani spoke a lot about the academic aspect of the school, but there are also numerous activities, so many opportunities, from musical activities, sports, and so many different clubs. We could never list all of them. So, as far as music goes, we have a very strong music department at Bethel Park High School. We have so many ensembles, a variety of different musical opportunities. There are auditioned ensembles if the students would like to partake in more challenging repertoire. You can audition for a chamber orchestra, jazz ensemble, there's a Top 21 and symphonic band. Or if you don't want as challenging music, if maybe you're not looking to go into a musical career, you can also partake in non-auditioned ensembles, like concert choir, concert band, and string orchestra. And of course, there's all the freshman ensembles, so they can participate too. But yeah, our music department's very strong. This year, our chamber orchestra actually got recognized as, we sent in a recording last year to PMEA, and our chamber orchestra was selected as one in the state to perform at the conference, at the PMEA All-State Conference. So, that is a huge achievement and just a testament to the wonderful music department we have. Coming up soon, we have our holiday concert, which is a big hit in the community, standing room only. And the students, we get to see different ensembles perform. We get to see a collection of different music we've been working on, and we get to appreciate all the music that we don't get to see all the time. If you're not in a band, then you get to see what the band's presenting, and it's really a great opportunity for both the community and the other students to see what we've been working on and get to showcase those skills we've been learning throughout the year. And besides the holiday concert, there are numerous other performance opportunities. Top 21 just today sang in the lobby for the Best Buddies event. We go all around and do different events as well. Chamber orchestra plays, symphonic band probably does. Yeah?
We'll be singing here next Friday, so make sure you're here because Top 21 will be here.
I forgot about that.
Did you see the Addams Family last year?
True. Yeah. Man, you made me lose my train of thought. I think, I think that about covers it. Oh, yeah. Fall play just ended, and I heard it was lovely. I was out of town for an audition, but it was, I heard, amazing. And now that that's over, musical auditions have taken hold, and with those completed, we just finished callbacks last Friday, and we'll be getting our scripts soon, hopefully, and rehearsals will start soon after. I have no idea when. I would love to get the schedule, but I'm so excited for musical this year, and that's kind of what's going on in the music department right now. That's about all I have to say.
Okay, yeah, so hello. Next, I'm Emma Timmons. So, next we're going to be talking about sports, so focusing more of on our fall because we just kind of wrapped up on that. We had a great tennis season. We have a tennis player here. They won the Whipple Champions, and then we also had two of our players win for the doubles. And then for all-section honors, all the results just came out, and we have so many of Bethel Park students that were honored. For soccer, we had four players. Volleyball, we had two. Boys soccer, who went their season undefeated, which is a great accomplishment, had three players. And then for football, 15 players, so. And then this picture here is our newest sport, the Unified Bocce Team, that won their section chips last year.
While I step back, while I step back from coaching this year, I co-coached last year with Mr. Picianeri, and that is him in the bottom right. He is geared up and ready for a run at regionals this year, so we are not taking a drop-off year. So, Mr. Richard joined Mr. Picianeri, and they are already hard at work practicing for bocce this year, and the intensity in those eyes is transferring to those players. He's got a reputation of doing this to people, so I had to make sure I got a picture of him out there for the presentation.
Yes, okay. So, next, I can talk, can you go back one slide, actually? Two, one more, yeah. So, our clubs, probably my favorite thing about the high school is just the involvement in the school, especially from where we're standing. Our freshman year was like the middle of COVID, so involvement was at its lowest. So, watching it climb all four years, like, you take everything for granted, and it just shows in your eyes. So, with SGA, I know we have our lovely member that comes every month to tell you everything, so I don't really have to tell you the specifics on that, but as the vice president, I've just been watching more and more people get involved, and that's probably like the highlight of my high school career. For DECA, they just went to districts at Duquesne, where they got to showcase all of their teachings that they learned in the classes. And they also have been bringing in businesses to talk to them, to learn their knowledge. I know just last week, they brought in Chick-fil-A, if anyone saw that on social media. So, they're doing that. Hawkeye is our online newspaper, and they're starting to get into like the connection with students online. They're doing a lot of new things every single day just to connect with the students, like talk shows. I know their newest recent article was about job shadowing, so all the students just can see what's happening around the school and take some advice and get some interviews. And then Best Buddies, like today, they had their awesome Christmas party. I cannot wait to see the photos of all the kids with Santa because I know, I love, I saw them, and they looked so excited. There's so many different clubs that I could stand here for an hour and talk about all of them, but I think that pretty much wraps up.
No, we have great groups. Interact represented here. No, just Environmental Club. We have so many different clubs and activities. Really, there's an opportunity for so many kids to find a path and find like-minded students that are doing things that gain their interest, and we're constantly looking to explore and give more opportunities for students to highlight and express and show their talents and abilities and continue exploring their interest in high school. All right, supports. I'm going to pass this over to Mr. Walters to talk about supports.
So, as we're all well aware, we're extremely proud of our academics. We're extremely proud of our extracurriculars, but we're also really proud of the supports that we can offer students to make sure that they make the best of their time at Bethel Park, that they make the best of their day, and that we help them through any situations they might have. And we have a lot of supports that help to do that. First, we have our Teams Room, our therapeutic emotional avoidance monitoring support room, where students can go at any time to really talk to one of our social workers, take a moment, get back on track with their day, or address serious issues that need more care from going on a routine visit to those social workers and really help them address whatever is ailing them and what's keeping them from their academic day. Our counselors do a great job providing some social emotional learning to our students, whether that's through career-based assignments and college exploration, or just specifically the emotional learning part of that. So, they couple with our social workers very well. We have a school-based therapist that sees students on a regular basis that are referred either through the SAT program or outside resources, that really provides a level of therapy in the building that's not available everywhere at all times. We also this year introduced a teacher teams room. We just had a chiropractor and a massage therapist in a day to give our teachers a little, a break that they could sign up for during their plan or during their lunch. We've done some snacks in there for them. We offer refreshments and things in there for them to really take a moment from the day and relax a little bit. And one of the newest things we're offering is a caring closet where we're going to have our work-based learning students repurpose some of our lost and found items that have been there for years, wash them, clean them, and place them in an area that is private within the building, so if students who are less fortunate need something, they can go into that room and select something that they might fit their needs. So, we're really proud of those support options.
No, yeah, we, a lot of great advancement. You know, the teacher teams is really tied to the wellness and the strategic plan. You know, Mrs. Cusick, who is the coordinator of the teams room and one of our deans of students, has taken on that initiative along with the administration to extend those opportunities. And it's nice, she's bringing these outside service groups in for evaluations, things and wellness options for our staff, making sure they're on their tip-top to help our students be on their tip-top. The caring closet's an amazing thing that's really going into creation now. We have so many students that are less fortunate, so you know, we're also going to have some product supplies, deodorants, things, and necessities. You know, one of the things in today's day and age, there's so many variables and things to learning. If we can eliminate those variables and some of those things and perceptions and things and, you know, not have students have to make a choice between eating or buying this or doing that, so, you know, just through grants, donations, and some other opportunities through different things, our work-based learning, and some of our DECA kids have a project combination where they're going to try to staff that. It's going to be discreet. Nobody knows. It's glazed window. Nobody will know, you know, go in there, take what you need to make sure they have food over the weekend, snacks, dry goods, Pop-Tarts, things like that. We're going to do some things that, maybe incorporate a give-back with a fridge and things like that, just so students, no one's going home hungry, or they have different opportunities and options as we see these things when they come up. School culture. All right, celebrating achievement.
Hi, my name is Faith Kloonin, and so we love to like recognize all of our athletics and all of our clubs, but we really wanted to like showcase all of our academics that we do. So, we decided last year that we were going to redo our lobby, and so our lobby looks so good now because it really showcases all of like the students. So, we have the military wall. We have with all of the branches, we have a room where it's kind of like a miscellaneous room where we can do signings, but it has our school in the background with our logo, so it really represents our school in general. And then, so then, we also have our student achievement award wall, which is right out, so everyone has to walk through it whenever they walk into the school, so everyone gets to see it. So, it really encourages students to like build and try to do their best. So, we just started, okay, so this, we also have the student showcase wall where we, any of the art or whenever we have the musical, we can have anything showcased, so that's like the first thing people see when they walk in. And then we have the music department, and then we get to have the alumni wall, which we get to add on every year. So, it's very updated. It stands out. It makes us stand out to everyone else. And then, this year, we decided to do a student of the month wall. So, a lot, we wanted to recognize kids for their academics. So, we have one student for each grade, nine through 12, and the teachers recommend these students, and there's a group of staff members that choose these kids every single month. And then the extra effort award is for kids that go above and beyond, maybe not just in academics, but for community service or any other aspect of just they're putting in a little bit more, which is very nice. And then we also have the vocational award, which is just any vocational students who are also excelling just at their VOTAC schools. And then we also have our Merit Scholars, which we hung right in our cafeteria, so no matter what, they're big on the wall, everyone gets to see them. It really just presents of It really just presents of how hard these students worked to get what they did, their names, everyone gets to see them. Then we also like to have just like little posters hanging around the school, just to like remind people throughout the day, just be nice, you know, it's Bethel, best place, best people, Bethel Park, always. And then we also have our Bethel Park Blackhawks little thing where we can take pictures, we can do signings. It's kinda really there to just pop Bethel Park.
Yeah, we've really taken a push. Faith's been a part of the Student Leadership Team for two years. Everyone's new this year. So she was part of the group last year that really initiated a lot of this stuff, did the planning and incorporation and designs for the wall. We're just constantly looking to try to, you know, advance that. You know, when you look at the Student of the Month, you know, we look at that academic performance. Again, it's not just the kids that do well, but the kids that show growth or try or give that there. The extra efforts, really acknowledging the whole embodiment of, you know, being kind and going out of the way and doing something either exceptional in your activity, your sport, or the community. Vocational Award's amazing, you could see three schools kinda on there. Parkway Steel Center and our Work-Based Learning Program. So it's really an opportunity to highlight those students that are giving their efforts in their transitional goals or vocational trades and really projecting that. And then our Staff of the Month as well. We've been very fortunate with some partnerships to help, you know, give these students awards. Crumble Cookie has helped with this. BJ's has helped with donating food to do this, so kids love food and things like that. So it's even more encouraging. And again, it's really showing between, you know, the distinguished alumni, the Military Wall, which we're gonna start working on for the remainder of the year and getting those names up there for those who've went to military services, really giving our students someone to look at and embody and know that these people have walked these halls. These are your neighbors, these are your family, these are your friends, these are your community members. And giving them something to excel and aim for no matter what. So the National Merit, the new, you know, 143 Initiative this year, these have just started going up. So they haven't gotten the full description of this yet, but we're looking for Random Acts of Kindness. And there's a QR code in there where students, staff, anyone can basically suggest if they witness something or see something, we wanna recognize it. So this is gonna really kick off. We've put them out. I don't know if the kids fully know what they are. We have so many hanging flyers and communications in the school. But we're gonna start promoting this. And again, it's one of those things just to push the culture to be good and do good things. And when you see good things, we wanna recognize it and make sure it doesn't go unseen. So anyone can really submit if they see something, we get it into Google Form. And then we're gonna give them some Bean Bucks to our school store. So it goes right back in there where they can get a free drink or snack at the Bean and Berry with those Bean Bucks to say, hey, we recognize you, keep doing great things, because that just builds on it and compounds. That's the newest signing wall that we did for athletics, military signings, music signings, or just press conferences. Just again, trying to push and extend the experience there. The AP Quarterly Champions.
Yeah, so we have the AP Quarterly Champions. And so every AP, we have a lot of AP classes that are offered. And so a teacher gets to like recommend a couple of students to be an AP Champion. So that's either that they are doing very well in the class or that even they have grown so much over the course of the class. So not just the smartest person, not just the best in the class, but who's shown growth, who's shown that they're trying. And we award them with not only their own little certificates, but they also get at the end of the quarter, a little pizza party from BJ's. So they get just food, drinks, award them for not only like doing well in the class, but also just taking an AP class, because it's a little intimidating. But we wanna continue to strive for more kids to take these AP classes and push themselves.
Hi, I'm Emma. And we have a lot of new and updated spaces at the high school. So we're trying to really work in getting different spaces for people to go to learn and do different activities in these different spaces. The first room is P404. And this room is like, it's like a big conference room. We have speakers come in here a lot, as you can see, the Chick-fil-A cow was in here last week. But speakers can come in here, sports teams gather here. And it's just a way for a big group of people to gather and have a presentation with a touchscreen. Fifty seats, yeah, fifty seats. And then this is a room on the second floor, which I actually really like. We, we're just in here a few, like a week or two ago for our English class. But it's just a big space with a lot of tables. And at school, the desks are like, they're squares. But here you can sit at a circled table and like work in a group. And it's just good to be able to move around and kind of do presentations. And we were like writing on these giant poster boards and stuff. And it's just a way to move around and kind of learn in a more engaging way. And then we have the new PE Hub, which is used for a lot of different things. Sports teams can go in here, there's a lot of equipment in there. And then we also have peer PE classes that'll come in here and do different activities in there. And then we have the Academic Hub, which is probably my favorite out of all the spaces. And there's just so much that you can do in here. We have the whiteboard tables where you can collaborate. We have those little cubbies where you can go take tests if you missed them. We have, we'll talk about it on the next slide, but there's tutoring, yeah, NHS, National Honor Society. Members can sign up to be tutors. And then every period, there's someone there that if you need help, you can come up and get help in the hub. And then we also have the tech support there with the IT guy. So if anything happens with your computer or you need any help, he's always there and he's ready to help you. And we also have the Writing Center, which is where we have English teachers there during a few periods of the day. And you can go to them even if you never had them. And they can help you with any writing assignment that you may have, college essays, essays for your English class, different writing assignments for different classes. And it's just a way to kind of make your writing better under the guidance of someone who's really good at writing. And then we have the Bean and Berry, which is our school store. It just got updated, a new space. And it's just, they have a lot more room to kinda spread out now and experiment selling different types of things. They have different coffees and hot chocolates and lemonades there and different snacks that you can get. And now it's actually in a room, so there's little tables that you can sit at to enjoy what you have from there. And people can just go there during their study holes if they have them. And it's open during the morning. And it's just really good to be able to have this in our school.
I'm just really excited. You know, when you walk into our main lobby, you see the quote on the circle there. It says, "Built on tradition, focused on the future." You know, these students here are all seniors now, and I think they've seen a major transition. Obviously, a disruption in learning when they started their careers at Bethel Park with COVID. And then they've been able to fully take advantage of all the opportunities. And, you know, they were just here listening to the bids and the projects in the schools. And I think, you know, the main thing we really wanted to capture tonight is like, thank you. You know, you guys set policy, you set budgets, you set things like that. But, you know, where does all that stuff trickle down? It trickles down to the experience of these students, whether you have your own children or you've had students that graduate. I think it's really important to always keep in mind, the final product is what our students are receiving from an education and from an experience and what they get to do and go from here in representing us and then hopefully being competitors and we ended up on that wall Sunday. But, you know, we have a tremendous amount of students, our family, our community, that really all contribute to the whole experience of Bethel Park. It's really unique and special. This is the fifth district I've been in, in my career between teaching and administration. And it truly is special. And I think when you spend time with the students and you hear and see what they're doing and you celebrate their achievements and their accomplishments, it really says a lot. And it's a package from our elementary principals and staff and everyone, all the way up to the culmination of high school before they set forth on their specific journey. So we thank you all for having us. We probably did go longer than we anticipated, but that's my fault. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valani. And when we get CHS credit for this class tonight, this schooling that we got. It was. He was, he was true to, he was kidding, but he was for real. Before we get to Mr. Cromie's Five Big Things, I wanted to touch on a couple strategic planning updates, the biggest of which, of course, the board heard at length, an update on our education bucket, our curriculum and instruction bucket, the goals that we've set for ourselves over the five years to grow our students' achievements. And we saw some of those outcomes at the five o'clock meeting. For this month's strategic planning report, I'm gonna talk both about the DEI goals and the student experience goals. As the board members recognized last month, there is plenty of crossover between these two buckets of goals. Both focus on our students and their sense of belonging in our schools. Both buckets share goals for all students to find both personal and academic success during their time in our schools. It makes sense, therefore, that we combine these two buckets moving forward. As lifelong educators and advocates for children, and with our strategic plan firmly behind our efforts, we strive each day to live up to the age-old belief and value statements where all students can learn and everyone is entitled to be treated with dignity and respect, that students' educational journey is to be shared by the school, the home, and the community, where our teachers and administrators care as much about the well-being of our children as they do about their achievements. This is who we are, this is what we believe. With that said, I'm pleased to report that we continue to make progress on all the objectives involving our students' academic and personal growth. I'll briefly review them here. First, we desire universal design for learning to be infused into the very fabric of our curriculum and instruction. It's a powerful influence on a school's culture. It really challenges the teacher to think differently about planning instruction in ways that every student can find a pathway forward. The goal of UDL is to use a variety of teaching methods to remove any barriers to learning. It's about building in flexibility that can be adjusted for every person's strengths and needs. That's why UDL benefits all learners, and that's why we're focusing on it. My thanks to Mrs. Viglioli for leading this work in the district. UDL aligns perfectly with the spirit of belonging we wanna foster in our schools. We want all students to feel connected, respected, and valued, where all students have a niche, a feeling of belonging that comes from good friends, engaging experiences, and feelings of respect from all they encounter. That kind of culture takes time to steep. It also requires all adults in any way connected to the school to emote patience, understanding, and encouragement every day toward every individual who crosses our threshold. So this BP culture can truly foster universal belonging. The second goal where we've made some progress is to increase our student assistance programs, services, and supports. I can brag about the Teams Room that you heard about tonight, the past survey for third through 12th graders, the Second Step, SCL Curriculum for our counselors, student assistance teams in every building. And we're sticking our toe in the shallow end of restorative practices. Ultimately, we wanna have as many supports and checks in place to ensure that no one is neglected and everyone feels like they belong in our schools. Many thanks to Dr. Menj for masterfully spearheading these initiatives. Another objective in our drive to be best in class is the effort to develop the whole person. And to that end, our sports programs, our clubs, and activities are absolutely essential. The goal's not so much focused on expanding those opportunities as is getting more students to find a place for themselves. These are the reasons why many kids get out of bed every day, to be with their teammates, their coach, push themselves to new heights. We also want to infuse service learning into those experiences. Effective targeted professional development is also an important objective for us in these buckets. Teachers need training and support to understand and apply the principles of universal design or the tiered intervention system or the curriculum mapping framework and so much more. Professional development time is precious, so we're committed to focusing our time, dedicating it to the big ideas that will grow our staff. While we should be pleased with this progress, it's worth saying again that these goals are seismic shifts in our culture. This takes time to accomplish and even more time for it to produce the long-term growth that we seek. I close by inviting everyone who hears this to lock arms with us, to surround our students with support and encouragement, to resist the mighty influences of social media and popular culture that glorify unattainable goals and ideals and marginalize individuality, to celebrate the inherent worth and dignity of all of our students, and to embrace the uniqueness and opportunity a diverse and inclusive community has come to expect. Thank you. Mr. Cromie, how about your five big ideas, five big things?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us to talk about some of the wonderful things happening. The high school covered a great many events and there's a lot of great things happening there. They also threw a brick through my window, making sure that they were included in Five Big Things. So I promised them that I would do it. Our first big thing is Memorial Elementary School recently honored Pat Wasserman, who spent 53 years working in a variety of roles at the school before retiring just before the start of this school year. They also celebrated her 92nd birthday. WTAE and The Observer Reporter recently did pieces on the extraordinary career of the kind woman that children and staff alike have always known for decades as Ms. Pat. Very, that's pretty amazing. I can honestly, there's not too many things you can say, we'll probably never see that again. That's probably something we will never see again. That's an incredible legacy.
Her sense of humor is as sharp as ever.
It's unbelievable.
I asked her, I said, what's the highlight of the 53 years? And she says, well, it's not Mr. Chalice. I said, well, he's standing right there in front of her.
Yeah, she's very funny, very funny. And the kids love her, so she's, she's been tremendous and it was really, really nice. Our second big thing was from today. Today, the high school hosted the Rock Your Holiday Sweater Party. The Best Buddies Club welcomed students from seven other area high schools, which included Avenworth, Baldwin, Charters Valley, Montour, South Fayette, Upper St. Clair, and Washington High School in Washington County. And they had, they just had their big celebration. The event featured, was for students with and without intellectual disabilities and featured lots of games, crafts, photo booths, and of course, a visit from a very skinny Santa. So it was wonderful. All right, our third big thing happened last week and it was really awesome. Cassie Moore from the West Virginia Raptor Rehabilitation Center held a Birds of Prey discussion with the second grade students at Benjamin Franklin Elementary School. Ms. Moore discussed raptor features and behaviors with the students and what characteristics set them apart from other birds. Raptors include birds like eagles, kites, owls, falcons, and yes, hawks, among others. The event was possible due to a kindness campaign grant from the Grabell Foundation that Lisa Jones had won. And it was really wonderful, I think the kids really enjoyed it. Sixth grade students from Team Eclipse and Odyssey recently visited the Operation Santa headquarters after raising more than $4,600 to fulfill 100 military children's wish lists. After shopping, the students wrapped and sorted the gifts at the Operation Santa Headquarters in Robinson, where the 10th Annual Operation Santa Family Carnival will be held this weekend. It's a wonderful event and they should be commended for it, because that's a lot of money for kids who need it. Final thing is the elementary and middle school students in grades three through eight, they recently hosted their first-ever goal-setting days. They took an in-depth look at their individual and class performances on the Fall MAP Growth Assessments. They set goals, both academic and personal, that they aspire to reach this school year with children and feedback from their, excuse me, with support and feedback from their teachers. I love this picture, these kids look like they're, a lot of drip in that photo, a lot of drip. So I've never been that confident doing anything as they look in that photo. So it's pretty cool. So those are our five big things.
Thank you, Mr. Cromie. Our Curriculum and Instruction Department felt that the update from the outcomes report was a sufficient update on their department. So we're gonna wrap it up and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the agenda?
No callers.
Moving to the business agenda then, Ms. Scalzo, I think there were three items under the.
Yes. Number one, under professional development, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to permit Dr. James Walsh to attend the 2024 PA Educational Technology Conference and Exposition in the Hershey Lodge and Convention Center, Hershey, PA, from February 4, 2024 to February 7, 2024, at an approximated cost of $800. Number two, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the change to the 2023-2024 school calendar. And number three, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to permit qualifying high school students and their chaperones, determined based on the number of the qualifying students, to participate in the following competition, National Competitive Cheer Competition in Orlando, Florida, from February 24. in Orlando, Florida, from February 7, 2024 to February 13, 2024. Victoria Magnolde and Carly Richardson as chaperones, along with 13 qualifying members of the high school competitive cheer team, to participate in the National Competitive Cheer Competition in Orlando, Florida, from February 7, 2024 to February 13, 2024. Is there any discussion on any of the three items?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Dr. Walsh, could you explain for anybody who might be listening and doesn't have access to the school calendar, what that change is and the difference with high school students?
I was going to ask that because I've gotten several phone calls asking why high school was left in because there is a concern about babysitter situations for older and younger siblings.
So everybody's aware that the primary election day in Pennsylvania was moved from May, when you adopted the calendar, to April. And so as a result, we needed to move the in-service day so that students aren't in the buildings when adults are in voting, to match up with the new primary election day. But we also are aware that there could have been plans for families establishing plans with their kids, appointments, and so forth. So our recommendation is to convert what was the primary election day in May to an Act 80 Day, which serves essentially like an in-service day, except it counts as a school day in the state's eyes because of the work teachers would be doing in the building that day. However, it also falls in the window of the high school's AP and Keystone Testing Week. And so their recommendation is to have students who take the Keystone, who will take the Keystone or AP tests to attend that day to complete their exams. The other students would have an asynchronous learning day. So if you're not taking an AP test or a Keystone, you would be learning remotely on that day. That's the old primary election day, which I'm checking quickly, was May 14. Were there other questions?
So the motion was made by Ms. Scalzo, second by Mrs. Turner. Just no other questions, we can take a vote?
Voting is open.
So Dr. Walsh, real quick on this, could we get some clarification to parents via the high school quickly as to those that would have to take the AP or the Keystone exams compared to those that would be asynchronous? So families with younger children and parents that are working parents are now not out two days?
For sure, yeah. Once the board approves this motion, then we can start communicating the plans to families. Okay?
Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you.
Mr. McGregor, can you take the three items under Personnel Committee?
Here we go. Tonight, we have three items. The first one being Approval of Extra Duty Responsibility Program 23-24. The second is Change of Assignment, and the third is Appointment of Personnel. Any questions, comments? None being heard, I'd like to move these three.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. McGregor, second by Mr. Scalzo.
Voting is open. Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. And next topic on facilities. Mr. Modrak, you can take those, but I think first, Mr. McCall, are you going to walk us through the financing summary?
Sure. You got, you heard from the architect earlier tonight about the cost of the project. The all-in cost for this project with the construction bids is $132,625,156.80. You have already borrowed for this particular project about $57.7 million, which is currently sitting in the construction fund. You have, to date, spent slightly over $6 million and from Fund 32 to fund this project already. We estimate that interest earnings on this will be about $3.75 million. Your current borrowing capacity is $71,500,000, which means that you would have more than ample funds available at about $139, little over $135, $139 million to fund this project at $132. You could make a decision at that point next year whether you wished to borrow the full amount or borrow less than that. Borrowing the full amount would give you the opportunity to get about $6.5 million that would allow you to finish Phase 3 of the IMS project as well. So that opportunity will sit there. So you do have the ability to fund both of those projects to their completion. I don't know if you have any questions. You still will have about five, a little over $5 million sitting in your capital reserve fund for future capital projects. We know we have some paving we have to do at the high school and things like that, and some work to do at the stadium, and so on. So that money will still be available as well as you have another $5.2, almost $5.3 million for capital projects sitting in your general fund. So you do have ample funds to fund into the future for projects so that you can maintain your buildings in proper order. I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead and take those.
Yes, sir. There are two items for facilities. One is awarded construction bids, and the second one's permission to bid. The first one, awarded construction bids. We had a presentation that included all the contractors for the new elementary school and the cost of their bids for their project. So it was available. I don't think I need to go through each one. We're good, unless there's any questions on that. That being said, our second item is permission to bid. The Board of School Directors approves of, mention, excuse me, administration's recommendation to grant permission to bid for purchase and installation of a stair lift for Abraham Lincoln Elementary School. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. We had been looking at fixing the problem at Abraham Lincoln. That is not an option?
No, that's correct. It is not repairable, so we're going to replace it.
Okay.
Could I, could you make that into a motion? Can I get a second?
So that if I get a motion to move it.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Modrak, second by Mr. Scalzo.
Voting is open. Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. Then Finance Committee, Ms. Turner, can you take that? And just as a update, so Ms. Turner's going to take Finance, Ms. Hoppy is going to take Policy Committee?
Okay, there are.
Those are the changes for this year. So yes, go ahead and take.
There are 13 items under Finance tonight. The bill list for December 2023, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to pay the December 2023 bills with the ratification of the December bills at the regular January 2024 meeting, since the earlier meeting date of December 12 does not allow of time to prepare the complete list. The November 2023 financial report. The budgetary transfers within the 23-24 operating budget to align expenditures and budgeted amounts. The payment for Independence Middle School Phase 2 renovation to SiteLogic The approval of service order agreement for the E-Rate Letter of Agency with the AIU for the regional-wide area network services and Internet access services. The payment of Independence Middle School Phase 2 and the amount of $31,047.16 to the Haze Design Group. The acceptance of a grant for $12,000 for the purchase of equipment to enhance the Bethel Park School Video Production and Media Production Courses, which goes along with the BPTV curriculum we vote on next month. The approval of the Student Services Contract for the independent contractor for school psychologist Kevin Stefanic. Thank you. Payment for the new K-5 elementary project to draw collective for $113,520. Approval of the proposal for supplemental work to HRG and the amount of $10,008 for the elementary project. Approval of sequestered account agreement with the Bethel Park Municipality and the Bethel Park School District for the new Bethel Park Elementary School. The developers agreement. The School of Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the developers agreement with the Municipality of Bethel Park for the new Bethel Park Elementary School. And then items declared unused and unnecessary. I move all 13 items.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Turner, second by Ms. Janisak. Any discussion or question?
Yeah, quick question. We see SiteLogic in January. To give us an update and give us maybe, since we're talking of Phase 3, to give us some progress and what kind of view they see for Phase 3. Maybe with January, they'll be available to do that? Do you think it would be possible?
Yeah, if we have a committee meeting the second Tuesday of the month, Facilities Committee meeting, and well, we'll be sure that they attend.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Bring it to vote?
Voting is open. Motion carries 8-0.
Ms. Hoppy, can you take the two items under Policy Committee? Or I guess just one, one is a discussion?
Yes, we're not voting on any of these this evening. One is for discussion only. It is an AR concerning parent of record. First one is a revision, excuse me, a revision to Policy 815 and 819. Policy 815 is the Acceptable Use of Internet, Computers, and Network Resources, and Policy 819 is Suicide Awareness Prevention and Response. There are a lot of strike-throughs and adjustments to language and so forth in those.
I have a question on 819. I'm just not sure if there's supposed to be an "and" or an "or" in the re-entry procedures. And I think this paragraph is repeated in an additional place. But it's talking about prior to a student returning to school after a behavioral health crisis, a district-employed behavioral health professional, member or members of the threat assessment team, the building principal or designee shall meet with the parents' guardians of the student, et cetera. And I wasn't sure if that was, do all three of them need to meet? Or if it's one of them needs to meet?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm sorry, I'm trying to scroll through and find where you are. I can't see them.
I don't know if you can see the note. I stuck a note on it, but I don't know if you see it.
Re-entry, okay, I got you. Okay.
It's the re-entry procedures. And that same string of people is referred to, and I can't, I didn't note it, so I'm not sure where it went. But I wasn't sure if that was saying all three of these people must be present for the meeting, or if it was one of these people.
The "or", right, so the "or" is for the principal could not, if he's not there or she's not there, it could be a designee.
Right.
Yeah, but in terms of re-entry, then yeah, they would have.
So it's an "and"?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. I don't know if you want to add an "and", but it might clarify it.
Any other discussion, questions?
I did have a question on the AR, the parent record. Are our systems sufficient so that it's easy for staff to know, you know, who is, you know, the primary custodial parent?
Yeah, the student information system is able to categorize them distinctly.
Okay.
And we're going to make sure that if there is any specific notes related to the custody, we would have that ability to add the notes into the student's record.
And I just happened to glance at the one last item, number 12, schools policing custody, that there may be cases where maybe one or the other parent requests a deviation from a court where custody. We should probably require that in writing, just so it's not a verbal request?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
Walsh, I do have a question on both of these. Did both of these, with all of the changes, were these PSBA-recommended changes?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, for the policies such, yes.
Okay.
Right, the AR is, was, was our work with the solicitor's input.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Feis, you want to take other? And I think it's just. It's 1, 2, and 3, 1, 2, and 4, so the.
Yeah, it's not there. Yeah, I'll ask you to table that because I don't see the attachment. So it's just, or just not move on it. We'll get that attachment for January.
To approve the agreements for student 005312 and student 1004810 as recommended by the Bethel Park High School Administration. And four is the Board of School Directors accepts the resignation of Mr. Dan Grisbeck retroactively effective December 8, 2023.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Okay.
Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. And item number three, these are the special assignments and the liaison positions for special assignments. Mr. Modrak, these are really just continuations of what we did last year. Mr. Modrak will continue with Pathfinder. Ms. Hoppy will continue with Steel Center. Mrs. Scalzo will continue with Shasta, and Ms. Janisak will continue with PSBA. On the liaison position, Ms. Janisak will continue to be the liaison with Municipal Council. I will be the liaison with Park, Rec., and Shade Tree Commission. Mrs. Turner and Ms. Hoppy will continue to be the liaisons to the PTO-PTA. Ms. Janisak will be the liaison to EIB. And since we tabled that motion last month as we work through mission combinations, things like that, we may make another appointment at a later date. And I guess the one thing we had technically, Ms. Turner, as the Bethel Park Education Foundation, she's actually in an appointed position there, and I think the Educational Foundation actually looks at you as the liaison.
Okay.
So. So those are the appointments. So that's the end of our business portion of the agenda. Are there any public comments on anything related to school matters?
Section 3, Paragraph 2 of the Constitution. Immediately after, they shall be assembled in consequence of the first. in consequence of the first election, they shall be divided as equally as may be into three classes. The seats of the senators of the first class shall be vacated at the expiration of the second year, of the second class at the expiration of the fourth year, and of the third class at the expiration of the sixth year, so that one-third may be chosen every second year. And if vacancies happen by resignation or otherwise during the recess of the legislature of any state, the executive thereof may make temporary appointments until the next meeting of the legislature, which shall then fill such vacancies. No person shall be a senator who shall not have attained to the age of 30 years and been nine years a citizen of the United States, and who shall not, when elected, be an inhabitant of that state for which he shall be chosen. The Vice President of the United States shall be President of the Senate, but shall have no vote unless they be equally divided. The Senate shall choose their officers, their other officers, and also President pro tempore in absence of the Vice President, or when he shall exercise the office of the President of the United States. The Senate shall have the sole power to try all impeachments when sitting for that purpose. They shall be on oath or affirmation. When the President of the United States is tried, the Chief Justice shall preside, and no person shall be convicted without the concurrence of two-thirds of the members present. Judgment in cases of impeachment shall not extend further than the removal from office and disqualification to hold and enjoy any office of honor, trust, or profit under the United States.
I'm sorry, you'll need to wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Hi, Christina Hedley, 5881 Irish Town Road. I just don't know who to contact, so I'm going to bring it to you guys. My daughter started basketball practice, and IMS, the lights in front of the gym when you walk into it or out, along with Neil Armstrong at nighttime, there's no lights in the parking lot, and it's just dangerous. And I don't know who to contact, but if you guys could look into it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.[1662.21][1662.21](Laughter) Thank you. Any other public comments? Any call-ins?
We have call-ins.
Any board comments?
Just one. Have a very merry Christmas and happy holiday season. I'm excited to have a break.[1687.36][1687.36](Laughter)
In the spirit of Christmas, I see the two twins over there.
Yeah.[1694.11][1694.11](Laughter)
Hold wait. Were you hidden? Doc?
I don't play the reindeer games.[1701.83][1701.83](Laughter)
The reindeer games for Dr. Mark.
I would encourage those that have children or interested in trains. The Bethel Park Historical Society has put up the train show this Thursday and Saturday, hearing wonderful things. So, I know I am going Thursday night with my fourth grader, because he is all into trains. So, encourage those. It's six to eight, I know, on Thursday night, and I believe like 11 to noon or two on Saturday.
I hope everybody gets a chance to check out one of the holiday concerts. Those are always so exciting and so very special. And enjoy the winter break, and everybody just hold on until break. We can make it. We can all make it. See you next month.
Fantastic. Merry Christmas. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.